Hello one and all. Welcome to City Council here at 6 o'clock on October 25th, year of our Lord 2016. I ask everybody to please rise and then vacation. Pledge allegiance. Oh Heavenly Father, the recent storm Matthew has left so many in our state in need. Please care for them as they rebuild their homes and their cities. Watch over those who have volunteered their time and energy to help their neighbors. We thank you, Lord, for the fine men and women who serve our city. They have shown us that we are truly blessed with caring and dedicated employees who work tirelessly to keep us safe and secure. As we show our support for those who have faced breast cancer, dear Lord, please know that we love and care them all and seek your hand in guiding us to a lasting cure. Tonight, our hearts are heavy as Marie Copeland, City Clerk, has lost her sister within the last hour. Commend her to your care and the family. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have an abbreviated roll call. Is everybody here?
Yes.
Everyone who's not USAID.
At the record show, all councils in attendance, the City Administrator and the Attorney.
Attorney, yes. I was going to get to that. Break it into that. First item, reading of minutes from September 27th. You have in your package the minutes. Make the motion to approve. Go to the second.
Second.
Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Citizens comments. I'm going to make one comment here, and that I would like to just reiterate what we've said so many times, that the citizens of this island are truly blessed with the service that our employees have shown to the rest of the community, from the Administrator down to every department, turning to for Matthew in preparation beforehand, during the storm, and now in the recovery phase. They've shown exemplary service to all of us, and we're truly indebted to everyone in the city and everybody who's reached out to help us in that regard. And I really want to thank you and everyone else. Please pass it on to everyone. We're still working. The recovery is still ongoing, but fortunately, we escaped a major bullet and will recover and be ready to serve again. So I'll open up for any other citizens who want to make a comment before council. Going, going, gone. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, they were picking up debris on Sunday.
Oh, yeah.
The past two Sundays.
We're talking seven days a week. Seven days a week, yes, sir. It's not over. As some of you know, we still have a lot of debris yet to go, but I'm pleased that we're working hard at it, and we're working under Plan B right now.
That's right.
Using the city lot. Let's go on to the Ways and Means Committee. We met last week on the 18th. Everybody's in attendance. General expenditures are running at 23 percent of budget. We're a quarter of the way through the year, so our target will be 25 percent, so we're in fairly good shape on expenditures. Our revenue is running 129 percent of what it was this time last year, but that's with some extraordinary changes in both our parking and our other incomes from the summer. So for the most part, for instance, the biggest line item is our rental licensing income, and it's at 102 percent of budget. So, uh, prior year, excuse me, so that's a good sign. Our tourism funds, the only thing that's changed is we believe hospitality tax revenue, and that's currently running for the year-to-date, running at 6 percent over prior year, having received $77,000 in hospitality tax for the month. So, all good. The Administrator briefed us that the staff is still working on our attorney, on the purchasing ordinance amendments, and they're still working on it. They will bring it back to us only when they're satisfied that it meets their needs and then judge to whether it meets our needs. We went on to review, report contracts that were awarded under the emergency conditions that we executed. We executed a $30,000 contract with Coastal Science and Engineering for post Matthew Beach survey work. I believe that work has been accomplished, yet we don't have the output. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we expect them next day or two to understand how the profile of the beach has changed. The entire length of the beach has changed from Matthew, and that will take us on as to whether we can recover some beach profile through our FEMA, if we're granted that condition to be able to apply.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Charleston County has been acquitted of the disaster.
Yes.
Okay.
Let me clarify that real quick.
Today.
You heard that?
I heard it on the TV.
Yes. Here's what I just got. So I had received that notice as well, and so I sent an inquiry to Alan Fountain, who is the Emergency Management Person at the state level, and his, because I said, "Are we now approved for all categories of work?", which would be A through G. And his response was, "We're still pending official word from FEMA for Charleston County. We know it's coming. We just need a signed document before we can announce it." Hopefully by close of business tomorrow, so.
Well, that just tells me that we've met the threshold. There's a threshold, right? That means we've met the threshold. We've made the applications from the county to the state. The state then has to get it into the feds, and then the feds go through their, whatever they do with it, and take it back to us.
It's a good sign.
Well, yes, without that.
In a bad way.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good sign, bad sign.
Okay, good.
It hurts so good.
Pretty good.
All right. Moving right along.
Moving right along.
We also issued a contract to Asheridge slash Lake Moultrie, and this was the firm that did all the beach scraping, pushing that was done on both ends of the island, Beachwood East and Doomcrest and Grand Pavilion and Ocean Club, and then all the way down from 100 to the end of 500, almost a 600 block of ocean. That work has been completed, and the amount awarded to them was $127,000. And we have applied for that to be recovered for under FEMA. In the meantime, we're considering it as part of our disaster recovery expense profile. We approved an expense of $2,400 for, no, I'll make this a million. Approval of $2,400 for an annual expense for the electricity and cabling for the traffic camera to be, that has been installed in rifle range and the connector, so that it can be made accessible to the public through SCDUT 511. Second. Motion in second. This is the camera that's up there.
It is pointed in the right direction. It is a swivel.
Okay.
You know, it can pan and swivel, but it is, we will have it pointed towards the connector.
All right. I'm worried. I'm a real care who's coming down rifle range, but I do want to know what's going on in the connector.
And Mr. Mayor, I think Solomon's Island has also paying for their share.
For their camera. With their camera and the.
But Mount Pleasant has not.
Mount Pleasant has declined to pay the operating expenses for any.
Want to lose people to hear that.
In Mount Pleasant.
Going to buy some more plants.
Ooh. Let's keep score here. All right. We have a motion in second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right. Motion carries. Thank you all. We went on to award a contract to Jones and Frank, an amount of $10,499.50 for an electronic leak detection system for the underground storage tank in the Public Safety Building. I'll make that as a motion. Grab a second.
Second.
This is including the long struggle that the staff has been working with in getting the leak system and de-hack on the same page. Hopefully, de-hack understands all this. And then we have an automatic leak detection system that's electronic and fail-safe. So, any other discussion on leak detection? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. I'm not sure whether we've done it, but under our emergency condition, we were going to issue a contract for review of the docks.
We have not done that yet.
So that is yet to be done, to make sure that the docks, which can be inspected best at low tide, didn't suffer any damage that we need to file for claim as well.
Just to clarify, one other thing that we did do was the budgeted expense for the attachment for the skid steer that would enable it to be able to pick up debris and load it in the trucks. We went ahead and made that purchase and for that device. The one that we're using right now is borrowed from the vendor until ours comes in, but we really needed to get that deployed. But that was a budgeted expense to do anyway. We just sped it up a little bit.
Good. Putting even the borrowed ones, a great use. That's good. That doubled our capacity to load.
Right.
All right. Nothing else from Ways and Means. Let's go on to Public Safety Committee, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety Committee met Tuesday, October 25th, all members in attendance. Go to the right page here. Under Citizens Comments, and we took care of this in a special meeting, HGTV, this program Island Life, did three episodes out here. The impact was unnoticedable from what I've heard, so getting some more, some more good, I won't say press, but that's actually video of the island. We discussed encroachments in the right way. Department was going to look at encroachments. I don't know where they got to because of all the storm damage. October filled up pretty quickly. I do have an update on the speed enforcement on 41st Avenue, the results of the volume speed, volume and speed survey. This was run September 16th through the 22nd, which was a full seven-day period. Forty-four percent of the cars were traveling 25 miles per hour or less. Eighty-three percent of the cars were traveling 30 miles per hour or less. Ninety-eight were traveling 35 miles per hour or less, and 99 percent were going less than 40 miles an hour. Now, there were 20 cars that exceeded 40 and four that exceeded 45. So, in summary, the majority are driving less than 35 miles an hour, which is the point where enforcement begins, and we'll be talking about that in our future Public Safety Committee meetings. But I think we were, we were all surprised that the percentages thing would be much higher for the higher speed. And we do have new speed devices coming. We've got signs that have been ordered, I believe, and we'll have two of them on 41st. These will be semi-permanent signs.
Semi? How did we get semi?
Because they could be moved.
We could move them.
They could be moved.
Okay.
Plant for 41st, but they could be moved, right. That's in bolts.
All right.
And we just took care of the cameras. And I will move on to departmental reports. Had a structure fire on Wild Dunes in September that turned out to be a lightning strike that damaged the home. Personnel responded to a call of a person in the water between Isle Palms and Goat Island. He was pulled from the water and transported. There's a swimmer in distress in the area of County Park, and it was determined that person had gone into cardiac arrest, and he was turned over to EMS after we did the basic life support on him. September personnel responded, this is fire also, I'm sorry, responded to 91 calls, 41 were EMS, and although the QRV has been removed from the island 24/7, the goal is to have an ambulance or other transport unit on the island quicker, and we'll be, we'll be monitoring this. Fire inspector conducted nine inspections with 39 violations, and one thing I want to mention, that Administrative Assistant Golden called all of the residents on the city's priority assistance list prior to Hurricane Matthew. So, and I know the mayor voiced his thanks to all the city employees, and we'd like to pass that on from the Public Safety Committee, too. They did a great job. And I'll move on to the Police Department. Kiosks have been covered for the winter months. There were 1,041 walkers and runners in the Isle Palms Connector Run and Walk. Lunch Buddies program has started again at Solomon's Island Elementary School, and Officer Kings has spoken to the teenagers about identity theft. Our next meeting date will be at 2:00 Wednesday, November 2nd. And I'll go back for a minute. Livability, there were 23 noise complaints, of which six resulted in citations and forewarns.
Any questions for Public Safety? Let's move on to Public Works, please.
Thank you, sir. Well, the worst committee met 11 a.m. Tennessee, October 11th. All committee members were in attendance. We approved the previous gene minutes. Citizens comments. Anne Mon of Seven Willes Way reported that three of the four corner lots at Willes Way and 31st Avenue were totally overgrown, in home to some unwanted creatures, i.e. rats and coyotes. She brought pictures to show the problems. She referred to a section of city code saying that non-resident owners of vacant lot, they should appoint a resident agent who should have responsibility for keeping a lot free of litter and untidy growth. The committee assured her that the City Administrator was going to be following up on this problem and making sure that the code was being followed and the lots were being cleared. Post Matthew report under new business, we talked about stair structures extending from private residence since over the dunes. As a, you know, the walkways going out to the beach are a result of Matthew being coming to sludge and eroding over the beach from that support. And Director Kerr told us about the OCRM and how they really do have jurisdiction over that, and they encourage those walkways over the dunes to protect the dunes. But if the boardwalk or whatever, they fall off into the beach and they're not, they're not attached to a structure at all, then this public works personnel has been taking them away. As a follow-up on that, I've been talking with construction fellow Ellen that is working on replacing those stairs, and he says there's, there's a certain set of code that you have to go by to put those in, and a lot of people are building structures that are, like, instead of using two-by-fours, using four-by-fours, or even six-by-sixes to put those steps down on the beach. And so they, the ones that were built legally, and probably want to get a follow-up from Douglas on this, that in the storm, they just blew away, floated away. But these were left as debris, but they're not within code. There's, there's some of them that are sunk with concrete and stuff, so it's a problem. Would you like to address that?
I don't know that I could. Don't know that I could add a lot to it, but we do, we specify that, that those boardwalks should not be built with anything heavier than a two-by-six and a four-by-four. We also specify that they not use concrete. You know, I think we know that things happen and people want to make it more permanent or more stout, and I'm, you know, we did see, we did, we did see non-compliant boardwalks when the.
Right.
Sand eroded away and there was concrete down there.
Yeah, just a lot of people have been asking about it, residents, and so I wanted to get some clear direction from you.
Yeah, and, and if they're uncovered, you know, they have to be removed kind of anyway, so.
Right.
I don't, I don't know what else I can add to that.
Okay. Thank you. Can we bill the homeowner for cost of removing? No.
This is, this is a problem, though, you know.
Yeah, sure.
Dangerous.
Old business update on golf cart path, Isle Palm Boulevard, between 18th and 20th Avenue. Is he talking about that again?
They're back at work.
They're back at work. They're building a fence this afternoon, so hopefully it'll be complete soon.
Before the snow.
Before the snow. Discussion of proposal from Jones and Frank related to underground storage tank. The mayor's already dealt with this subject. Then we had departmental reports, which are usually earlier in the meeting, but we wanted to have them a little bit later. So garbage collection was down slightly, but in the average rain, director stated that he expected that debris would be higher than in previous months, but he's surprised to see such a large increase. And we've gone through the post Matthew report. I'm not going to worry y'all with that again. We're working with FEMA, still trying to, as the mayor pointed out, get everything categorized in one place so the money can start flowing in. That's about it. The next meeting would be 11 a.m. Wednesday, November 2nd, in the conference room. Also, I would like to say that I had received a lot of compliments on the way the Police Department, as in a minute, handled the re-institution of island, and people thought y'all did a really good job with that, and everybody got back home that need to be home, and people didn't need to be here. Didn't make it, so thank you.
Didn't need to be here.
Yep.
I got a couple of nasty phone calls from people who have been turned around, and I said, "Huh, we're doing our job." They didn't need to be over here. They had no purpose of being over here, other than, in one case, they just wanted to walk on the beach. The other one never told me why he wanted to come, but he was upset, but we did the job that we want people to do, that citizens want the police to do, is that protect their property when they're not here, so. When people came back, we were all released and everything was copacetic.
Well, you're interrupting his career path, probably.
I'm certain there are stories. I don't want, Police Department probably has notes. The other thing while we're talking about Public Works, we are, the staff is still working diligently, along with Charleston County, in picking up the debris. We still have a lot of locations where there are debris. They're sweeping the island, moving east, and the Administrator has assured us that it's track, they're going to be finished by the end of the week. I wouldn't necessarily make book on that, but they're making great strides for me.
With the first pass.
And there are some, they're isolated spots where, you know, they're in, I'll say in commercial areas and other unattended areas, which they can go back to, that's fine. But, you know, I appreciate that they're putting in seven days a week, and I just hope the equipment holds up. And we're in Charleston County. I'm not sure everybody's aware, we're depositing, all the trucks are depositing over here in the county lot, and there's a huge, huge collection, and I saw the large trucks while we were sitting here pass by, going and collecting today's loads and taking huge loads off, off the island. And I'm looking back at the Fire Department. My biggest concern is when Halloween comes, and we still have a lot of debris over here in the parking lot. I'm concerned about somebody deciding, that'd be a great.
Don't say it out loud.
Well, you know what I'm thinking. I don't, I don't want that to happen, but right outside your window, so I expect you to, oh, Jimmy?
One quick question. I noticed today that you're putting a fence up along the golf cart path. Is it wide enough for two golf carts to pass? So, or would you have to wait until one goes by for the other one to come through?
I don't, it's supposed to be, but I would think that that would be so close that you would not want to do that.
Yeah, I just happened to kind of go, "I wonder."
Yeah.
No, I don't think it is.
Okay. But no big deal, I just.
I'm just happy to have it at all.
Right. Absolutely.
No more tickets.
All right. Anything else for Public Works?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Let's move on. No committee meeting at rec, but probably have something to say.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say that we had our ghostly tie tails last Friday night. It was probably the best one. Desiree was there, and it was probably the most attended, the best weather, you know, fires worked every pit, and the kids had a great time, and, and this coming Monday night is the Halloween Festival at the Recreation Center from 5 until 7. That's probably one of our top kiddie attractions besides Easter, so please come and watch the festivities. And our next meeting is 9 a.m. on November 2nd.
The Halloween Festival is extremely well-attended for both adults as well as children.
Oh, it's, it's, it's fun to watch.
Yeah, I know. I don't know what Ted is going to scare us with this time.
I've been thinking about it.
You've been thinking about it. Maybe we won't even. Personnel Committee, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We met October 13th, Thursday, October 13th, at 10 a.m. Our first order of business was a recommendation to postpone the Administrator's 2016 personal goal due to our keen in Hurricane Matthew. Administrator Tucker does not feel that she had the time to address her goal. Therefore, Councilmember Bertelli moved to defer the Administrator's 2016 goal to develop a plan of administrative succession until such time as she can devote the time necessary to adequately address it. Councilmember Ferentz seconded the motion, and it passed unanimously. We then proceeded to have a discussion on updating the city codes for the Personnel Committee. We reviewed some of the city code language concerning Personnel Committee's activities, responsibilities that appeared to be absent. Specifically, Personnel, the Personnel Committee does conduct interviews and resulting in recommendations to fill board and commission vacancies that are not specified in the code. Therefore, Councilmember Bertelli made the following motion, subject to the City Attorney's review for proper language. Councilmember Bertelli moved to add to the code the language that the Personnel Committee's recommendation for board and commission vacancies be considered as first reading of council. Councilmember Ferentz seconded the motion, and it passed unanimously. Discussion of efforts in reducing council-directed meetings and other activities and to reduce staff time went on for some times. We talked about the use of iPads, instead of lengthy reports and executive summary reports, all these efforts to go toward being a little more efficient and productive. The Personnel Committee, for instance, has committed to having, holding meetings six times per year, tentatively selecting January through May and September and October, and of course, if the need arise, you can always call a special meeting, but those would be the scheduled ones. In consideration of recommended appointments to boards and commission, Councilmember Bertelli moved to appoint Elizabeth Campson to the unexpired term of Jay Lee, who had a conflict incident because he's on the water board, so he, he had to resign and to fill that vacant term for the upcoming three-year term. Councilmember Ferentz seconded that motion, and it passed unanimously. We then went on to other reappointments. Councilmember Ferentz moved to reappoint Malcolm Burgess, Sally Mullog, and David Nelson to the ATAX Committee, Carolyn Holster to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Brian Garner to the Board of Code, Board of Appeals, and Richard Ferentz, Louis Gregory, Bill Mills, and Vincent DeGanji to the Planning Commission. Councilmember Bertelli seconded that motion, and it passed unanimously. In consideration of a vacancy on the ATAX Committee, Councilmember Bertelli moved to appoint Rusty Williamson as the cultural representative on the ATAX Committee. Councilmember Ferentz seconded that. Council member Ferens seconded that motion and it passed unanimously. We then moved on to a discussion of elected officials' use of city-owned electronic devices. This one, we had a very in-depth conversation about the use and discoverability of elected use of electronic material regarding not only FOIA, but any litigation by or for or against the city. And so, um, Assistant Administrator Desiree has assured us that we're going to get training on these devices and she's working on a, uh, manual, okay, for lack of better, yeah. So we'll be interested in seeing that.
Idiot proof.
So, uh, as a result of that, council member Patelley moved to recommend to the city council the adoption of the policy for elected officials' use of city-owned electronic devices and email accounts. Council member Ferens seconded that motion and it passed unanimously and you all have a copy of that recommendation. Do we want to call for a motion on that?
Well, there are going to be two motions that are necessary as a result of the, um, the report from the personnel committee. One would be on the recommendation for the appointments and then the other would be on the adoption of that policy. Um, and just for, uh, for the record, for the minutes, we have received a recusal from council member Ferens based on the familial relationship that exists between her and one of the candidates for boards and commissions. So on that vote, she will be recusing herself from that.
Understandable.
Okay, so.
A written recusal.
So I'll entertain a motion to appoint the folks on our list that you've received. I could name them all again, but Patrick's already done that. Although on your list, you do not have Rusty Williamson under ATACs, so that would be.
I'd like to make that motion, including Rusty Williamson as, as presented.
Okay, and I'll second it. Any discussion, please?
What is Mr. Williamson's arts and cultural background?
Photography. That's the only thing that we were going on.
And we, we did not have a lot of applicants.
Right. And I want to clarify before the vote is taken that the recommendation on the appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals is for Elizabeth Campson to, uh, complete the unexpired term and then also to be reappointed for the new term beginning one one seventeen.
Correct. That's why the two names. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Now we're up to a motion for the use of city-owned electronic devices and email accounts. You have in your possession a two-page document that's probably going to blow, I suspect, over time. So I'll make a motion to adopt this as a policy for elected officials.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this?
There's several.
Please.
Yes, sir. I know Mount Pleasant is using electronic devices and some other municipalities around here. I'm sure we don't have to reinvent a wheel to get this. I mean, are we?
We researched just about everybody's policy we could get our hands on in order to develop this document.
Thank you.
I think this draft, a lot of it was taken from Mount Pleasant's policy.
Okay, thank you.
Carol?
I just, when, when do we think we'll roll out the use of the iPads?
The delay right now is the Microsoft three sixty. We're, we're actually doing two things. We're, we're getting the iPads and getting them usable by everybody, but the other thing that we're doing in tandem with that, our email has been hosted up until this point by a company called VC Three. We're moving the email, all of the city's email hosting to the Microsoft three sixty two, which will give us backup capability. Right now, we have to back up email manually and some good features. So it is, it is truly that aspect of it that is taking the most time migrating the emails to Microsoft three sixty. So that's what's delaying us. The answer to your question is we're hoping for the first of the year. And we are behind by the schedule that we had originally set.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, how's that go? Anything else from personnel you have?
We really had a discussion on the adoption and, and use of consent agendas, again, as an attempt to be a little more efficient. And consent agendas is a way to just be a little more efficient and not have to bring up, um, various items over and over again, that they can all be concluded and included, excuse me, in a consent agenda. And that would be like committee reports, minutes, uh, anything that the council would have, the, and the public would have the opportunity to peruse prior to the meeting. And it's just a, a way to address, uh, uh, those items efficiently and quickly. Any member of council that would be abductive, objectable to having that on the consent agenda can ask to have it removed and be considered separately. In our discussion, and we didn't, uh, we talked about maybe phasing this in. Administrator Tucker said maybe we could start with this at the council and ways and means, uh, level and then see how, how it works and maybe use it at the committee level as well. Did you want to speak to that or any, any more, Linda?
Well, um, the only thing I would add is that since this discussion, I picked up an agenda when we were at the applicant's briefing at Charleston County the other day that was a full council agenda of theirs and embedded in that agenda was a consent agenda section. And, um, so that, that was just kind of interesting to see that. The only area of it that would have me concerned would be that it being on the consent agenda, I would think implies to the public that, hey, that decision's already made and it's not going to be any discussion or, or I'm not, you know, not going to attend a meeting, for example, because it's not going to be debated. Um, and so if in the course of the meeting, a member of the council says, I would like to discuss this and I want it moved off the consent agenda, then I would worry about the public's not realizing that that might happen and feeling deprived of being able to hear that debate. I do think the intent of the consent agenda, and often we have a whole series of things that have been through committee and been through ways and means and, you know, it's been clear that the vote's been unanimous every time, so it's pretty clear that it's going to get passed at council. So I know that that is an occurrence that we have, but it would have a little bit of the public risk that something could be debated among council that the public didn't think would be part of a debate, so they don't attend the meeting.
Well, the assistant administrator pointed out in our discussion, and we all agree, certainly no controversial issue would ever be on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Everything's covered.
Yes, sir. I totally agree with what Administrator Tucker says. I mean, we've had a recent council meeting months ago where we had like seven or eight things voted on at one time and, and I don't think things were thoroughly vetted in public that should have been vetted. So again, I think if any member of council feels it should be debated, it can be pulled out by one person's recommendation.
That's, that's the standard operating procedure. Again, it's not to, it's just to be more efficient. It isn't to deny or obfuscate somebody's, um, opportunity to, um, question or to debate or to have more information. It's, that's not the intention at all.
This logistics, we would have to publish a consent agenda prior to the full agenda and to see if there's anybody who wishes to pull an item off the agenda. So then when we publish the full agenda, if there's an item that wish, somebody wishes to discuss more fully, that it's on that agenda and that, you know.
Council member Ferens mentioned that in her experience and I've used this certainly at the school district level and, and in my role as an exchange official and at the district and, and local level. Um, yeah, I, it's really there to expedite. It's not there to, to inhibit.
Before we introduce it, I would like to get through the changes to our purchasing ordinances because I think that will clean up a lot of stuff that we deal with as, as rudimentary material. Um, and once we see how big a step that is, then we can move towards consent agendas.
Okay, just a couple more items. In terms of vacancies, um, we, there are no vacancies in the fire department or rec. The building department will have a permitting clerk vacancy on January first. Uh, we are still in the process of hiring four police officers. They've been vetted and then going through the, uh, background checks and, and all that's required is pretty extensive to get them cleared. We, of course, still have the one human resources and payroll vacancy. Administrator Tucker said that this is running about a month behind, but staff members with whom, uh, she's worked with to, uh, review has commented on, they've had the opportunity to reduce some of the resumes and who they're, they're very interested in.
I, I would just add there, we have interviews set up for the, for this week through Thanksgiving week, so we've made some interview schedules.
Okay, as far as then the, um, safety awards, uh, rec department Andy Senwald, fire department, Chris Vassos, uh, police department is Jane Stewart and public works is Joseph Ankrum. And we have chose not to meet for the rest of the year.
For the personnel committee. Very good. Any questions?
One question. For November and December safety sweepstakes, how are we going to do those months for awards?
They're usually announced in January.
Okay. Accumulated, okay.
All right, real property committee, please.
Yes, real property met on October tenth with all members present. Under the comments from the marina tenants, Carla Pope reported that the Morgan Creek Grill fared relatively well during the storm. They lost a small awning that was blown off the building and onto an air conditioning unit and ice maker. There was also one small puncture in the roof system. They also lost some fans from the upper deck and one television. Insurance claims have been filed and the restaurant reopened October eleventh. Although Morgan Creek Grill, um, has a business interruption insurance, which will cover some of the loss, the restaurant had anticipated a big week with weddings and a pig roast planned for that Saturday, so it's still a loss for them. Uh, the marina store did not sustain any major damage. This storm highlighted the advantage of having gas pumps available at the marina. They provided much-needed service to the community. Council member Rice commented how nice it was to have a second supply of gas, especially since the station on Palm had run out. Under old business, the public restroom, since we have updated the appraisal of the public restroom, Director Carr is getting new estimates for repairs and improvements to the building now. Uh, work on the mural will begin November thirtieth. On our forty-ninth access, Lake Forty-Nine, uh, the storm actually washed sand back and though some work still needs to be done, the cost should be less since it anticipates less sand having to be moved. Comprehensive beach plan has gone out for public comment. The staff is working to respond to the comments made by OCRM. None of the OCRM comments should alter the way the city manages the beach. On our major re, uh, renourishment project, we're, we're still working at being allowed to harvest sand from the Stone Fleet area and have been in touch with both US senators, Lindsey Graham and Tim Scott for some help. We can go through all of the, all of the report on what happened during the storm. I think it's fair to say we dodged a bullet. Concerning the buildings, Administrator Tucker reported the following. Leaks were found in several properties that must be addressed, siding off City Hall, but no evidence of roof leaks. At least a half dozen leaks were discovered in the public safety building and no significant damage to the rec center. As I said, we dodged a bullet. As we talked about, debris's a problem and we're still working very hard to get rid of that. The biggest thing was the dunes having disappeared, we needed to do an emergency berm, uh, whatever you call it, development. And Councilman Harrington moved to award an emergency contract to Coastal Science and Engineering to survey the beach in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Councilman Rice, council member Rice seconded the motion passed unanimously. We also, um, Councilman Rice, council member Rice, I'm sorry, moved to award an emergency contract to the vendor to move sand at Grand Pavilion Beachwood East Seaside Ocean Club and Councilman Harrington seconded and that passed unanimously. We also have included since then, uh, the areas between Second and about Sixth Avenue. Really, that's it. You can look through the minutes to see some details on the, the damage, but, uh, knock on wood, we were lucky this time. Um, next meeting is November eighth at nine thirty in the conference room.
Thank you very much. Any questions for real property? I just want to, I failed to mention that our fire department put together a team, went down to Edisto Beach.
Oh, great work.
And, uh, spent a number of days down there, I guess, cutting trees and doing whatever else was necessary. So, uh, you know, I consider not just paying it forward, it may be our turn next time around and, you know. Kudos to all of those folks that gave them time and effort, so it's not easy to get there.
Yeah. It was a send up to send down.
Yeah.
And then drive home, hour and a half.
Yeah, they couldn't stay there, of course. And they're still struggling to get back on their feet. Any other questions for real property? All right, uh, boards and commissions, you have the minutes for planning. Nothing to note. I'll turn to second page of our agenda. Bills are in your possession. I'm going to call for second reading on ordinance two thousand sixteen dash oh eight, an ordinance pending Title Five, Planning and Development, Chapter Four, Zoning Article One, general provisions, Section Five dash four dash thirty-eight, Table of permitted uses in the commercial districts of the Palm's Code of Ordinances to prohibit mobile and temporary units being used for outdoor sales of rental personal property except during city hosted dash sponsored or sanctioned special events. I'll make a motion to approve second reading and suspend, and suspend the reading of the entire order.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Second items, second reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash oh nine. Again, ordinance pending Title Five, Planning and Development, Chapter Four, Zoning Article One, general provisions, Section Five dash four dash sixteen, temporary uses, City House Code of Ordinances to delete reference to mobile home storage and other office trailers, office trailers used for temporary housing, storage and offices for city emergencies and public safety equipment and personnel. I approve, I am moved for that and suspend the reading of the detailed ordinance. Motion seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, carries. Uh, nothing else to be brought forward. We have our next meeting on the fifteenth of November, which will follow our Ways and Means meeting, which will be a doubleheader for you. That's just following the meeting we are scheduled for the fourteenth. So if nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. If you would state the time, please.
It is seven. No, it is six forty-eight. Six forty-eight. It could be a record.